...for improper display of behavior and appropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time to vote to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public, uh, for public comment. Uh, we'll go over these directions if we have visitors tonight. Uh, so with that being said, I'd like to get the meeting started and Carolyn, do all call it great.
Aiden Warner. Basketball game. Mr. Hi.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mrs. Junker Davis.
Present.
Mr. Stubble.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Present.
Mr. Ziliff.
Here.
Okay, on to presentations. I think we're gonna start off tonight, where's our guy? Oh, we're flipping it tonight, I'm sorry. Is Adventure Cat? You're doing alright.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So I wanted to let my teachers and their students out, they'll all do introductions, they put together a slideshow. Our Adventure Academy are the clubs that run before and after school, and we were able to support this initiative through our federal funding grant, um, and so I'm gonna turn it over. Go ahead.
Okay, so I think, uh, I think my group is first, and I'm calling double duty, so I'm gonna talk about this and then run out. There we go. Okay, so, um, the group that I'm running is called Hornet's in Harmony. Um, I have fourth and fifth grade on Tuesday and Thursday in the morning, and then sixth grade I invited to come down on Monday and Tuesday after school. Um, it's a great chance for kids to work on sight reading. If you're not a musician, that means being able to look at what the music is and play it, um, just by your muscle memory and using your brain. Um, it's great for music for music's sake. This time we did Christmas carols and a bunch of stuff where there's no pressure, no, the kids are just doing it to have fun. Um, it's extra music outside of band. Um, the second session, we're gonna look at jazz or pop music, which is something they might not normally see in regular band. Um, and then I just put a little clip in here, as we all know, music kids are usually involved in about fifty thousand other things, um, so I couldn't bring everybody in, in here tonight, but this is an example. Um, this is three of our sixth graders, um, some of them are involved in Math Olympians, um, and so Tuesdays tend to be a little bit light. So we only had three of them, this is the first time that they're looking at this piece of music, it's just that they're a second.
Turn the volume up on the speaker.
On the speaker.
Yep, on speaker.
On speaker.
We're muting it over there right now.
Yep, hang on, I'll restart it, maybe. Well, there we go, okay. So this is sight reading, this is the first time that they have seen this piece. And they've had one year of instruction with me, and then moved up to the middle school and are continuing their instruction up here. So that's the kind of stuff we're doing before and after school, it looks like we're gonna have a full roster again for the second session, but we won't be doing Christmas carols this time. Alright, thank you.
I think next is gonna be, um, Art Happenings, I think is the next slide. We've got a couple members.
Thanks ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm Kristen Maxwell, I'm one of the club advisors.
And I'm Haley Missady. And this is Abby and Riley. And Hornet Happenings is our school newspaper, so Bryce is handing out, um, ours first, I think it's our first ever school newspaper. Um, so, we got the kids together, we have it Tuesday mornings, Wednesday mornings, and Thursday mornings. Um, and depending on the days, we have third, fourth, and fifth graders, so it's a good chance for them to kind of brainstorm together. They got to come up with the logo, the backgrounds, pretty much the entire newspaper. Um, they wanted a fun corner, and I kinda told them, well, you're gonna have to make up, like, the word search and all that kinda stuff, so they had to make sure their spelling was right, and all that kinda stuff, so there was a ton of stuff that went into it, they had to kind of generate, um, interviews for Mr. Winter and that kinda stuff, so they did an awesome job. Do you guys wanna share anything, maybe your favorite part?
Hi, my name is Bryce, and I am in fourth grade, my favorite part of Hornet Happenings was a fun cor- corner, we made a quad, a crossword search, and we shared all the important people, we sho- shared all the people's birthdays.
Really good. Good job Bryce.
I know Riley, um, came up with an idea from our newspaper that I think was most popular.
Do you wanna share your section?
The history of Oakfield, we have like all of when the school, when the first school was built, and like, how much it like cost.
Do you remember how much the first school cost?
First school cost thirty-six dollars.
And Riley, she had her own in, she was able to contact the historians right in Oakfield, so she was able to collaborate with Mrs. Baylor's mom. Um, and then Abby, do you wanna share something that you worked on?
I worked on, um, like, we got, um, um, we had Rock Bell and, um, we did, like, um, then Beyonce was Rebecca and Sarah. Yeah, and it was funny, a lot of the kids' favorite thing was stapling and sorting things. Like, what's your favorite part? Well, the stapling, organizing. They did an awesome job, so we're very proud of them.
Yeah, this is great.
Guys, are you all in fourth grade, or Bryce, or Abby and Riley, or Riley, are you in fourth grade as well?
I'm in third grade.
You're in third grade?
I'm in fifth.
Abby, what grade? You're in fifth grade, and Bryce, you're in fourth?
Mm-hmm.
I'll tell you what, you guys did a fantastic job talking to us, it's not an easy thing, and this is super cool. I, I am so proud of you three, and there's other people in here, in, in this club as well, is there?
Between twenty and twenty-five.
That's it, huh? That's all you have?
And they all wanted to come tonight, well, we can all come tonight, but, um...
Well, you just did something amazing, speaking in front of people is not an easy thing to do, um, but you guys did a wonderful job, really happy that you were able to come here tonight. Thank you so much, and thanks.
Awesome job. Happy.
Yeah. Next, we're gonna get involved in the janitories letter too. I know the competition.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Um, that's just Breakfast Club, um, Mrs. Damarzo and I did Breakfast Club for third graders, um, before school, I'm Mrs. Shuner, um, I'm a fourth grade special ed teacher. So we had such an interest in Breakfast Club that each session is gonna be its own grade. We had fifteen students who came every Tuesday, and we worked on recipes, we practiced measuring, we did some graphing, we tasted some new foods, which was, um, a little challenging for some of us, um, and we charted what we did, and this is Brently, and he said, tell us a little bit about what we did. That way, good one.
Hello, my name is Brently Zimmerman, and I am in third grade. I want to tell you about what we did in Breakfast Club. We made banana sushi, banana sushi, fruit smoothies, waffles, yogurt parfaits, air fryer egg whites. Here are our favorite breakfasts. We liked the waffles the best because we got to choose what we put on it. We added whipped cream and powdered sugar, and we made different types of waffles like chocolate chip. We also liked smoothies because the strawberries blended into the yogurt really well. And the yogurt parfaits because the, we added the different toppings to our yogurt, and we dif- and the different toppings tasted good. The last breakfast we liked was the banana sushi, because we love banana, and honey, we liked soft foods.
Good job.
And we put, this is our, um, banana sushi, our parfaits, um, our egg fried white, and the waffle bar.
Nice job, Brently.
Nice job, Brently.
Oh, um, I, I'm mad at them. Racketeles was, um, something that Mrs. Santi and Mrs. Peca worked together to do some art and some writing at the same time, um, Mrs. Susan Johnson also assisted with that. They met Mondays and Wednesdays after school, and they just designed their own storyboards, they worked with the students to just kind of lay out their story, and then use some artistic tools to, um, develop the pictures, um, and there are a few pictures of them working on their storyboards. This club will also be meeting in the second session, um, and it's a really big hit with a lot of our students.
I'm Robin Benaro.
I'm Holly Joliger.
So we did a geometric crafting club, um, part of our goal was to work on some of that vocabulary for geometry that, um, needs a little bit of practice, because it's often something done towards the end of the year, so we wanted to kind of brush up on that some more, so all of our crafts really did involve shapes, designs, geometry of some sort, but it also was some great fine motor building and direction following for these kids, but we're gonna turn it over to Sawyer and Abby, who are gonna kinda tell you about the three different crafts that we did.
First we did a boondoggle that formed into a square shape. At first it was really hard, but once we started getting into making it, it was easier. And, and in the end, it looks very cool.
The second craft we did was a rhombus ornament. We made it out of a long piece of yarn and two popsicle sticks. We followed a pattern to weave the yarn, it created a multicolored diamond. The last craft was an icosahedron ornament. This was made out of twenty circles folded into equilateral triangles.
We did cut it and fold it on day one, and then we glued and assembled it on day two. This was really awesome, and we can hang it anywhere.
We put it, we put in a lot of work to do these crafts, which made it super fun.
Do you guys wanna walk over and show them some of them? So I have to say how impressed I am, Sawyer has mastered the word icosahedron too. But these are those three different crafts. We did average sixteen kids coming to this craft, too, and they all loved it, and we're unable to do it second session, but we're kinda joining in on another, neighboring master session, because they liked it so much, but I gotta come up with different crafts.
This was the...
Boondoggles, Fodger Leonard. Very nice job. Awesome, they're gonna be happy to see you. That's beautiful.
This was the one that we used, like, the long piece of yarn, and then two popsicle sticks with it, and we did a lot of seam folding over and over again. And this was the one that we used, like, twenty circles. Thank you, I used everything color that we had. And this was the boondoggle that we used.
I can't remember how to do it. I know, I don't remember.
No, wow.
Too many.
Is this mine? Yes, this is mine, isn't it? You made this for me? That was Mrs.? Yeah? This is mine. Sawyer?
Sawyer, so you're the director, you say so.
I like to see that.
So let's see, the third session will be four coming, so you know, the kids teach them.
So what are you doing these days?
Two days.
Nice job Sawyer. You did a nice job.
Thank you.
Great job. What was that big word again Sawyer?
The icosahedron.
I'm Krista Derschog, I teach fourth grade math, and, um, I was the advisor for the CRAH Mystery Math Club, and it, we called it Mystery Math because the kids never knew from week to week what we were going to be doing, um, as the activity, and there were all kinds of lively games and activities that we did to draw out the math, um, that was kind of hidden underneath, so we did, um, with glow sticks, we did some neon geometry, and they formed different shapes, and worked together to, um, put together whatever they came up with. We did a zigzag volleyball, where they, um, passed a beach ball back and forth down the hall in a zigzag fashion, and did some back practice. We did a bouncy dice and a human bingo, we had bound, dice that bounced, and they had to, they got to come up with different ways to get to one of the numbers that they could stand on. They could multiply, they could add, subtract, however they wanted to get, to try to actually form a human bingo. Um, and then we also played card games, and they used math within the card games as well, so, um, this will be happening again the next session, and we had eleven students that came and really enjoyed themselves, so Lucas Piscatelli is going to tell his part about the...
Hi, my name is Lucas Piscatelli, and I'm in fourth grade. I wanted to be in Mystery Math Club because I like math. We did many fun activities like making shapes with glow sticks, playing human bingo, Math Gaga, solve puzzles, and we played card games. My favorite activity was card games, because we did many different card games, like Thirteenth Pyramid and Solitary.
Hi, I'm Amy White, I teach the three content literacy, I am unfortunately flying solo tonight, my friend got very sick at school today and ended up leaving early. Um, so, um, I was, um, in charge of the Tybo group, where we were not just working on physical fitness, but, um, we were definitely working on mental health, which is definitely important, and to be able to work with these kids and teach these kids something that they had never experienced before was definitely a different experience, um, because we worked out with Billy Blanks, um, every week, I had nine friends, and they were like, eat your beaver, they couldn't wait to get started, and after the five minutes, they were done, they were tired. And they could not believe that I was able to keep up and keep going and keep them motivated and help them out and stuff, um, so, um, we just had an absolute blast. Um, we're gonna take a little break, um, with my son, hopefully when he gets out of his past, uh, into basketball, um, but then hopefully start it up in, um, session three. But the kids just absolutely loved it, they were in, um, grades three, four, and five, and it was nice to have a nice mix, and then there were partnerships that also formed from this, and I, um, monitor in the hallways, um, in the morning when kids are coming in from breakfast, and my room too, and, um, these kids are like eating breakfast together, and they're walking back together. So we were making friendships, we were learning how to synergize, we were learning about each other's differences, and we were learning how to be amazing cheerleaders, while also learning how to punch and kick in the right way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have two more sessions, they're starting the second session, there's some new clubs that are being introduced, so we're gonna try and keep the kids on their toes. Overall, did you guys feel like we're learning a lot every day, or did it feel like a lot of fun too? Both. So board members, do you have any questions for our kiddos? Alright, well, thank you so much for coming.
Great job guys.
Alright, next up is...
It's a tough round to follow.
This is a tough one.
Well, thank you very much, uh, first and foremost, have a, you know, thank you for having us here today, um, it's really coming to, coming to a close here fast, there's a few things left, we are pushing and pounding and chasing to, uh, ensure that these last, these last items get resolved, uh, it sounds like there's gonna be quite a bit of work, uh, over the break here, and then some finishing up, so, safety, no lost time, uh, quality, the moisture content issue's been resolved, and the terrazzo work's gonna happen in early January, uh, so there will be, uh, disruption again in the, in the main vestibule, but, uh, as we talked about earlier, it's great to see kids moving through there and enjoying the space, and, you know, once it's finished, it's really gonna be, you know, a lot, a lot of opportunity for, uh, for future growth and, and student enjoyment. Uh, the, the cost on the payups, we're about ninety-five percent expended, um, with the, uh, the last five percent, and also some, uh, included in that are some contingencies and things like that as we close out. It is critical, so we've been chasing and running around with all of us to ensure that payups and closeouts are done to, uh, to get Christine's information together and ready for closing. Uh, change orders are, uh, as of eleven-thirty-twenty-two, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and ten executed, with, um, ninety-nine thousand and contingency still out there. Uh, some things that are going on, the remaining, there's punch list items, actually our electrical engineer is out there tonight finishing up some punch list work, uh, that he'll have issued out to the contractors tomorrow, uh, for next week's work, but there's punch list items, uh, that'll be worked on over the break next week, uh, the millwork's here, but installation will happen next week also, um, the main entrance, the terrazzo, as I said, scheduled early January, that's going to take some time, there's a number of layers, it is dirty work, so we'll be watching that, ensuring that they're, uh, taking care of that part of it, uh, the millwork that's gotta be finished up, there's also the hexagon panels in the display area that needs to be, uh, resolved and completed, um, and then exterior finishes and some signage. Uh, tonight's one of the first times I've been here during the day, or at least when there was daylight, I got here early enough to see it, it really, the colors I think are, are really great out front, and, and it's, it's definitely dramatically changed the arrival, so we're very excited. Uh, windows, there's still some pieces of temporary glass that need to finish those up and get those completed, I know there's some punch list items that, that need to be resolved also, um, and then the corridor terrazzo, there's still beyond just the entrances, the entrance in that area, there's some door cut-ins that need to be done, uh, some other patching and things that'll be resolved and taken care of. Uh, just some updated photographs, the, the work on the entrance, um, the main vestibule here, the tile's underway, obviously the lower band of tile is left out until the grinding and everything else is done, uh, if you've ever seen terrazzo installed, it's in a liquid form, and they pour it and squeegee it out across the floor, and then they come back with large disc machines, almost like if you've seen hardwood, uh, finished, but these discs have different cutting tools on the face of them, and they literally grind down the surface of it and create a polish on it. It's actually very similar to the original terrazzo, it's just now we're doing it in three inch in thick levels versus what used to be three and a half inches thick. Uh, the toilet rooms are, are open and operating off the main lobby, uh, then you can see the, the doors and the installation and the main vestibule, um, and this is the section of tile I was talking about, they can't put those in there until, we don't wanna bust them up and bait and break them before they, uh, get into the work there, 'cause they will, they'll, they'll damage the edges if they don't have it. Another shot of the main corridor, and then in the, uh, the main office here, so I, we're very, we're very pleased with, obviously we're a little frustrated that we're still finishing up here, um, but unfortunately, these are the challenges in delivery materials, and then the, the moisture content in the slab was something unique to, to this situation, so, um, we'll be here throughout the entire process, ensuring that it's done between our team that's out here, and as, as for any time, if there's ever any questions, feel free to reach out and, and contact us. Any questions about where we're at, or what's going on?
Supportive any questions? I provided you updates, the weekly update, um, the big thing, obviously, after break, there'll, there'll be some things done during the break, but, um, this section will be, you know, quarantined off, you know, for the month of January and probably the first couple weeks of February, um, you know, they have guaranteed that by February fifteenth, that whole area will be complete, 'cause there's interactive panels that will go up, there's a trophy case, um, so just for the community, um, after the first of the year, um, if you're attending, you know, basketball games, we will now open up the, um, the ramp at the end of the middle school hallway to enter if you park out front, we'll still have obviously the, you know, gymnasium entrance out back, um, but we'll have to, you know, section off this, and then obviously that, we'll get some parent square messages out for when kids are, you know, being dropped off or picked up to school, we're gonna have to, uh, you know, use that end of that main, you know, the middle school entrance there, we'll, we'll figure it out, so we'll get information out to the community.
No question, just a comment, and I think I've made it before in the past, just a reminder about the doors while they're working on the project, and making sure that those stay safe and secure and aren't being propped during the daytime, it sounds like that's when they're probably gonna be in and out the most. Um, and then also ventilation, when you pour the terrazzo and you're buffing it and doing all of that, what type of barriers will be put in place so it's not seeping into the hallways?
It's more of a dust than the odor, there is an odor to it, but it, it's generally not obstructive, it's really the dust that's generated, so they need to ensure when they put these partitions up and take them off, that they're doing that, and we're gonna have to be visually checking them and just pushing, uh, DGA as the constructor manager to ensure that they're doing that. We're gonna set expectations, there'll be a, uh, pre-installation meeting where we come together and talk about it, and that'll be one of the main topics, you, you know, we're doing this during operation, activities, it's not over break, it needs to be accelerated, 'cause the sooner we can get it done, the better, to get you guys in there and finished, but also to ensure that it's not affecting those other spaces. And frankly, if it, if it is, I, I don't personally know whether to do this, how much turn a day and how much in other hours, I did not check on that.
We were told, I mean, that there might be more, so they're gonna try to do it second shift, but there are times where they're just gonna have to get in there and...
Correct, there's certain things they can do that aren't, uh, that aren't as difficult or, or obstructive, but, I mean, if they're grinding up there, it's really a noise issue, you know, that's what we're mostly concerned about, so we'll watch and check that.
Anything else guys? Dan? Pete? Okay, Rich, thanks.
Hey, on behalf of all of us, have, have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Hope you have a wonderful and safe new year.
Same to you, thank you.
Thanks, Rich, we'll see you real soon.
Thank you.
One, two, uh, in three minutes, it resolves, the minutes will be about fifteen-twenty-twenty, regularly be approved under motion. Move. Just gonna get a second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed, motion passes. Carolyn, we do have visitor requests?
We have one, um, Pastor Timothy Young from the Oakfield Community Bible Church.
Eevee?
Hello.
Yeah, she said I'm Pastor Timothy Young with the Oakfield Community Bible Church. Um, I thank you for listening to me. It was presented to, uh, the board last year, uh, about transportation to an after-school program at the church called the Good News Club, and unfortunately, after the approval, um, the pastor unexpectedly retired, and, uh, the ball kinda got dropped, I didn't take over till June first, and by that time, it was a little too late to implicate, uh, implicate, uh, get this started anyways, um, because it only runs through the end of the school here. The Good News Club is not just a little local thing, it's worldwide, there are five, or fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty-three chapters of it worldwide, um, children that have been reached by it are fifteen million six hundred twenty-eight, nine hundred and twenty-one children, um, teachers that have been trained is three hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-five, um, and you might wonder what exactly the Good News Club is. The Good News Club is a faith-based after-school program, and it teaches children from kindergarten through sixth grade, not only biblical faith, but how to be men and women of integrity. It, it teaches them, uh, to get involved in their community, and to, uh, love and respect all people regardless of color, religion, sex, nationality, or social status. The program would run, um, one afternoon a week, the beginning sometime in January of twenty-twenty-three, hopefully, um, and would last approximately an hour and a half each day, and run through the end of the school year. The start date, we can't give an exact date... The start date, we can't give an exact date because we need to get permission slips and the applications distributed through the school so the children can take them home to their parents and get them filled out. Cause I know that the district would need numbers on how many students would need transportation. So that's something that we've gotta get these applications and everything out. And I think the, the leadership of, of the, that are running the program at the church are gonna be addressing that in the beginning of the new year after this holiday, getting in, getting down to the school and, and seeing exactly what they have to do to get these distributed. And like we said, we don't have numbers until we do that. Transportation is really important because we want the students to be able to get to this in a safe and, and, and reliable manner. You know, cause safety is very important in today's world. We don't want children just walking up the street anymore, even though it's like two blocks away. You know, things happen all the time now. So that, that's a big issue with us wanting the schools to provide transportation. It's a safety issue and our children are very important. And so that's, that's one of the main reasons for this, asking the school to provide the transportation. And I don't know where everybody stands on, on faith-based things. But I do know that currently, the district does transport students from Oakfield to Notre Dame School in Potavia, which is also a faith-based school and program. So that, there's a precedent, it's already been set. The Good News Club also around the world, they have them at schools, churches, in some communities, even in backyards and stuff. So it's not unheard of, of having that at a church or a school. So I guess that's about it. And we, we would, we would hope that you would really reconsider this or, or yeah, reconsider it and get it approved again so that we can get these children some, like I said, just some stability in life and, and training to be good and prosperous adults in, in a world that's gone kinda crazy. I thank you for listening to me. And again, I hope that we can get this approved and get this going and make a difference in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors tonight? Item five, approval of warrants be resolved and after an audit of the bills. Payment of the warrants and internal claims audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Treasurers report.
There were none.
Got it. John, first reading?
Sure, first reading of two policies. Policy fifty-one forty and fifty-three thirty. What we're looking to do is combine those two and update policy fifty-one forty to include fifty-three thirty, which is about three sentences long on budget transfers. You'll see what the old policy was and what the current one is. Basically, the current one talks about the administration of the budget, that we're responsible to the board for the administration of the budget. Basically, the budget transfers, that we can transfer monies and obviously notify the board, you know, in, in what we're doing. Obviously, when we, you know, transfer monies, you know, they, they balance out. Sometimes that's necessary, just depending on the movement of monies and, and not using certain codes. And, you know, it's, it's, like I said, nothing earth-shattering here. And the other policy, once again, we're looking to eliminate policy fifty-six twenty because, sorry, not fifty-six twenty, looking to update fifty-six twenty because we can remove the fifty-six twenty-one in regards to inventories. We have to inventory everything that we purchase, whether that be technology, equipment. We have to have spreadsheets and account for everything. And then when we have to report those as far as audits goes or what the state requires. And so you can see that we have the current and then what we're recommending. And we're just gonna look to combine the two. Those have not been updated since two thousand and six. And more and more, as we move on, and school districts are purchasing more equipment and more expensive hardware and software and technology, we need to, we need to update those policies. So, so first reading, take a look, nothing earth-shattering here. It's really not gonna change our operations, you know, other than, like I said, updating policies and combining a couple of them.
So you talk about the two thousand and six, so for like policy fifty-one forty, you can see where it says two thousand and six on the top. So when this is updated, then that will not have this year's...
Correct, correct. Yes, every policy that the board has been updating, we changed to two thousand and twenty-two. Yep.
I like the idea of removing policies. It seems like we're always adding policies, removing policies, because I imagine there's a lot of policies.
And if you notice on the, the recommended for fifty-one forty, a lot of districts did this back in two thousand and nineteen. So this is something we can kinda get with, get up to date.
Yeah, cleaning things up as much as possible.
Fifty-six twenty then, on assets as for report, well, I have to say that you would then have the depreciation expense for, for annual loss.
Correct, so we're doing this now. We do, we do an annual, you see it on the, your financial statements. We do above a certain percent, a, a certain amount of the five thousand dollars. This just kinda tightens things up cause our, our current policies really don't. For one, it says, you know, that we would, the threshold is a thousand dollars. That's not really the industry standard as far as fixed assets and reporting on, on the financial statements. It doesn't mean that we don't track them, doesn't mean that we don't record it, that we don't inventory them, it's just that we don't report on them. So it kinda gets us, gets us more current.
I forgot what CASB standard that was, but this is just to fall in line with that so that you're reporting those assets that are five thousand dollars and greater on the financial statements, correct?
Yes.
So it's reported that we've acquired them or that we still have them within our inventory?
Um, both.
Both.
Both, both. So, so it's, when, when we get assets in, they stay on our books as an asset until we, you guys surplus them and then we say, then we remove them from them. But otherwise, they stay on there until, and they're, it's fully depreciated. So even if something's fully depreciated, you know, it's five thousand dollars, we've depreciated it over ten years, but we keep it twenty, it still stays on our books as that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It, it's not mine either. The inventory is my least favorite thing, one of my least favorite things about my job. And it takes a lot of time. I've spoken, part of our, our relationship with NICE, our insurance company, they do an asset valuation for us every five years, so we're due for that. So we're gonna be doing that this spring too. They'll come in and they'll actually go through, do an inventory for us that's covered and paid for. So, and I'm also looking to them to assist us with the annual accounting for it.
What system do you use? Do you tag it, like a barcode?
Manual right now.
Right now, it's manual?
Yeah, and a lot of our assets, like the smaller things, like the equipment is all Bosse's, equipment like technology stuff. So that's not, that's all tracked through Bosse's and they've tagged it. But the larger items, like our bus, no, I don't give it an inventory number. We just have it listed there. They would come in and tag.
Yeah.
And then as far as the fifty-one four goes, this isn't like just a wide-open ability to make any kind of budget transfer that you would like to make, right? This is kinda just...
No, there's restrictions.
Right.
Yeah, there's restrictions with the state. So for example, if, say the, the voters approve your equipment, this is what you're allowed to, to purchase. I can't, I can't put money, more money into buying equipment from other codes to take things away and increase. But I can reduce. So say, for example, Josh, I budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bus, he pays a hundred and forty for it. I can take that ten and put it towards supplies or use it for something else. But I can't say to him, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand in there, you can go buy two buses, I'll transfer a hundred and fifty. And I can't do things like that. So there are regulations with the state that restrict it to begin with. I have been, just because of my history and my other district, I've been bringing budget transfers to above ten thousand dollars. Honestly, that most other districts aren't even doing the budget transfers. If there's something significant, I think you know me, I kinda share things, probably overshare. So, you know, if there's something important, I would definitely bring it to your attention.
Any questions? What are your feelings, guys? Do you wanna...
We're not gonna do any more of those, so.
You can do us another reading another night, no rush for this, it's obviously two thousand and six to now. I don't think a month will...
Should be fine with that. I don't favor that. So what is it? It's a motion to approve of policy fifty-one forty as written in policy fifty-six twenty.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Already had a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right.
Motion passes. Thanks, man.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, Christine, while you're talking, why don't you continue?
How much do you want me to talk?
Whatever you feel comfortable with, Sam.
So December's a big month, we had a lot of deadlines, things, the SO transparency reporting, Medicaid cost report reporting, the maintenance effort calculators for the, for the special ed department expenditures. But most importantly, and the biggest ticket item, is our capital project. We worked extensively with Maggie from Municipal Solutions, you've known, you know Maggie. We worked to get the final cost reports in December because one of the things that's contingent with our budget this year, remember we talked, we're making the extra principal payment on the bond in June when we, when we go up to bond. And it was important to try and get that bonded. One of the things that, that's contingent on it is the ability to get aid for that. If I'm, I'm not gonna make the pay, you don't wanna make the payment if you don't have the aid coming in. So to get the aid generation happening this year, we had to get the final cost reports in in December. So that's why we really pushed the capital project folks to get us their final, final invoices. So we have all that information, we got those out. We actually signed them and sent them in yesterday to the state, they've received them. And now they go through a review process. Hopefully, you know, they don't come back with too many questions on them. I think it's pretty straightforward what we, what is submitted. So as long as they're approved by December thirty-first, that'll make sure we get a partial year aid for those to help me get payment in June. So that was, that was huge. Obviously, the treasurer reports for September, I do have them on my desk. Lee has been wonderful about trying to, you know, take that on and as, as an extra thing off of my plate. I just haven't had a chance to review her work. So that's kinda the checks and balances, how I see things going forward with that dynamic and the relationship with the treasurer and my position, having them do it. And I just kind of oversee it and give them that responsibility. But we'll get caught up there. On the agenda, you have to accept the extra class activity audit and the single audit and the corrective action plan that goes along with those. You know, the extra class audit had several findings. Some of them were repeat from the prior year. So we're having some conversations with the faculty advisors and reminding them of the procedures there. The single audit had one comment. The single audit, remember, is regarding the federal, federal grants and one of the surveys that they did on the grant about, do you comply with whatever requirement of the grant? We submitted a week late in June. Okay. Thank you very much, we won't do that again, right? So, and then we do have some budget transfers on here again. You know, if they're a, a larger budget transfer, I've been bringing them to your attention. So those are on there. Affidavit, affidavits of the tax collector, you guys all signed that. This was our first year with Genesee County Tax Collection. We collected, the percentage in this tax collection period was ninety-six point three nine percent. And in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was ninety-six point three eight, so it's pretty, pretty level, it was pretty consistent. I really wanna say thank you to the Genesee County Treasurer's Office for, notably Kevin Andrews, the deputy county treasurer, for his help in getting this set up. The inaugural year, I think it went very, very smooth. I, I don't know if there were consumer complaint or taxpayer complaints about how the process, if you guys heard anything. I didn't hear anything, Lee didn't hear anything. So that was, that was really good. I, I feel really good about that. And again, I, I credit Kevin, you know, with some of that. There's a cooperative purchasing resolution on here that allows us to purchase AV equip, AV equipment through a purchasing group to leverage their bidding, bid pricing for some stuff for technology. You do have the appointment of our district treasurer, Jenna Allport. She is, works for the, of course, I had a write-up in here for the other gentleman that had previously accepted the position but changed this night. Jenna comes to us from working at the Orleans County Treasurer's Department and also in Orleans County Civil Service. So I think she brings some air, some experiences that are, would be very helpful to our office, especially with civil service. I think that will be very helpful. I'm excited to have her start, but it's thirty days, she has to give notice in her contract so she can't start till January twenty-third. But, so I'm, I'm anxious, but she'll get here. Lee Tyler has requested to amend her retirement date to January twenty-seventh, which is helpful to us to get some training. And she has agreed, and then, and I'll bring it to the board probably next month, to, you know, obviously, a treasurer's not gonna learn the treasurer job in a week. So she's agreed that if we bring her on on a per diem basis, maybe in the springtime, as things come up, like for example, tax preparation, preparation for what she converts over to the, to the county in summer, that's a one-time thing that happens in August. So bring her back properly, spend a day with the treasurer on that. So that's kinda what we're envisioning that to be.
Her retirement date change is a direct result of Jenna's start date?
No, no, actually, it kinda started first. So she, apparently, the Medicare office lost her some paperwork. And so their Medicare stuff can't start until February first. So if everything, it was just kinda like fell into place.
It was strange in Medicare office.
So she wants to be able to stay, right. So she really, so she wanted to stay on her health insurance through the end of January. So actually, in the end, it was kind of a blessing in disguise. I really kinda think that we get our messages in different ways and that's a message that's...
It's very strange.
Yeah, yeah, everything kinda fell into place. And later in the agenda, under Board Discussion Roundtable, is the possibility of creating a deputy treasurer position in the business office to, you know, to address some of the added responsibilities that have come on over the years, the last probably five to six years, more so. But it goes back even further, things that get put on the, the business office that just, without, you know, what they call unfunded mad dates, it's just ridiculous. So I welcome a conversation with that when we get to that point.
Any questions for Christine? Thanks. John?
Sure, just a few items. I wanna thank the New York State Troopers and Melissa Hoffmeister. So yesterday, we received a great, I guess you wanna call it a Christmas miracle from the New York State Troopers. Melissa mentioned to me that at around nine o'clock, there might be some State Troopers pulling up with some gifts. I actually thought they were like for her, maybe something was going on. And next thing I know, there was about six or eight trooper cars out there and about, you know, ten or so officers coming with just huge packages of, of gifts. And so Melissa, who's our social worker, and then devised up a plan where they could donate gifts to some of our families. The Troopers, thank Sergeant Ben Fassano from Troop Bay Zone One in Lockport, reached out and asked if they could, if we had some families that they could basically adopt and, and purchase and donate some gifts to. So they worked with Melissa and donated a whole bunch of, you know, gift cards and toys and clothing and stuff that the families needed. We actually asked the families, what, what do you need? And they provided a list and we were able to fill it all. And so yesterday, they dropped them off. And this afternoon, Melissa and our SRO, Alejandro, went and delivered those to the families. So just, it was just awesome. There's a picture on our... There's a picture on our website, if you want to take a look at it, but it was, it was great. You know, I had a concern that I said, oh, boy, people driving by seeing eight or ten state trooper cars out front, they're wondering what's happening over at the middle high school building. So I was ready for that. But it was great, it was great. It was a surprise to me, and it was great that we were able to help out some of our families here in our community. So thank you to Melissa and the New York State Troopers Office, really appreciate it. Last weekend, kind of on that note, just so you are aware, our SRO, Jordan was involved in the shop at the cop, and he was able to pick out some toys and gifts for some of our OA kiddos here. And thank you to Jordan for your service in that, that occurred on a Saturday, and he was able to do that with the Genesee County Sheriff's Office. And on the following Monday, he received a nice card from one of the girls that he had went shopping around with, and it was just a thank you, nice, nice card, and it was really a nice gesture for the Genesee County Sheriff's Office to hold that. And it's great to see, you know, the families with, with our SROs and officers doing that. This month, we had our holiday concerts, which were well-attended. I want to thank the entire music department for putting together the performing groups. I was at both shows, and our kids were great. And I think the community really enjoys that time of season, especially now that we're post-COVID. It's nice to have people here to listen to our performing groups. So again, the students were wonderful, and thank you to the music department for putting that together. And our winter sports teams are off and running, they're off to a great start. And I know there's a game tonight, the boys are here. And I just would like to wish the board and our entire communities a happy, warm holiday season and a safe new year. Looks like it's going to be pretty nasty this weekend. So other than that, just all, all good news, wrapping up the, the twenty-twenty school, twenty-twenty-two school year, and looking forward to the new year. And we do have an extra day for our kiddos to have off for the holiday break, because we do have a superintendent conference day coming back. So our staff and actually our whole district will be in training all day that day. So, good stuff.
Thank you.
So?
So in the past three weeks, my secretary has started, and she has been absolutely phenomenal. In the past three weeks, she's helped to develop and update our website with me. She's been very clear on communication with parents right into Parents Square and staff, things like that. Meetings have been scheduled and on calendars all the way up till May. And now we're starting to develop five or four meeting schedules. So it's refreshing to have some more systems and procedures and things like that in place and, you know, have someone in there helping out. So it's been really good.
That's great, thank you.
We have been in both the elementary and the middle school, really talking about the new science tests. It's a big shift. The state has recently released the new investigations. If you're not aware, there will be no more lab practical for an elementary science data assessment nor for the middle school. Instead, they are creating investigations, they call them. There's four required. And it's been, it's a big shift, because instead of, we used to have the fourth grade science test, which is now moving to fifth. But instead of saying, okay, we're going to get this fifth grade lab test, now they say, well, we have four investigations, and they have to span over third, fourth, and fifth. The same thing happens in the sixth through eighth. There's four investigations, but they don't all happen in eighth grade. They occur across that grade band. So there's a lot of shift, not only in the format of the assessment, but there's a lot of shift in what they're asking our kids. It's very student-centric, it's phenomenon-based. The kids are asking the questions, the kids are collecting the data, the kids are interpreting the data, the kids are critiquing the data, they're engaging in discourse with each other. And it's new for teachers, it's new for our kids, and I know a lot of our teachers have been a little intimidated by it. We've had some amazing discussions recently. Most recently, yesterday, I was in the elementary, and we just really tackled it and dove in. Both elementary and middle school have plans for how we're going to handle the assessments, how we're going to play catch-up, because the state failed to let us know in time, because next year, all the investigations have to be completed. So how do I complete all the investigations if they start in third grade, and I'm in fourth grade? So I missed the third. So anyway, a lot of logistics, great conversations. I, once again, I'm astounded by the staff, right? Here's our parameters, this is what we have to work in, you guys are living in the trenches, talk to me, what's going to work? And they, they've come up with plans, and there's still lots of questions. And I don't know if Justin, you're hearing it, Kendall, but the state does not have all the answers. They can't explain a lot of the things.
The exemplar, the test for fifth grade, it's like taminated by beavers. And it's intriguing, and the subject as it is to me. It's just very, it's heavy, like it's not-
A lot of obstacles, the third through fifth, and it's been made very plain to us, the assessments that are, or the investigations will occur, because they're not assessments, they've shifted terminology. The investigations that will occur third, fourth, and fifth are all written at the fifth grade level.
But they're not, it's not a C test any longer, where for fourth grade, all you have to do is circle sun. And that was the answer. And almost always, and you have pretty close to a hundred percent passing rate, year after year after year. This puts weight across all districts, and you just can't, oh, my God, teach it in fourth grade all of a sudden. You have to be teaching it all the way through. And it's, it's a lot of, it's, it's just not the answer anymore. It's a phenomenon, right? So you have to be able to infer what your results are and draw conclusions that, you know, it's not always, you know, A or whatever the answer. So it's hard. I'm curious to see how we do it. Do you have, do you have, do you use, do you use the kits for bowl season off?
Yep. So we've been using them for the last two years in fourth and fifth grade, because we're departmentalized in fourth and fifth.
So you're not behind. I don't think you're, because those are, those are pretty well-aligned to, to your four, to your-
And this year, we introduced them, so our third grade is using them this year. So that's our three through five band.
And then you'll see how they spiral if you get them down into those lower grades, and they'll be, I think it'll be fine.
Anyway, exciting.
So be another budgetary, hi Adam.
We've already talked to Christine.
Of course, the tough data also costs us money, so.
They're well worth it. They're well worth it. That's cool. That's a good conversation. Let's see, here, JC. Oh, you're the elementary principal. Wendy, you're up next.
I was going to also echo that the concert was phenomenal for our elementary students. They were super nervous, but they did a really great job, seeing some of our kids for their very first time and kind of forgetting that it's their very first time on stage, and trying to talk them off the ledge as they're walking on, and not realizing that their voices carry. So it's kind of cute, being like, oh, they can hear you, they can hear me. And it makes them more nervous. So they did a really nice job. And then we are really loving our wellness days at the elementary school. Our kids are thriving on them, the teachers are loving the ideas and coming up with new ideas. There's a lot of service projects that they just did this last month. So it's just, it's fun for them to kind of take that minute and just really collaborate and build that relationship with each other. So it's been fun this summer.
JC is, is not here today, he's not feeling well, I think.
He's not feeling well. If he was here, I think he could probably highlight Don Scholman's visit and some of the comments that Don Scholman made. I know you guys can read a report, but you know, the general gist is that we are safe, and so a lot of processes we have in place that are going well. So if he was here, he would echo that.
Feel better, JC. Rob, what do you got for us over there?
I want to add, Justin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt, I-
I see, but I don't want to give up my-
You're the middle high school. I'm sorry, Matt. Yeah, well, go ahead. Why don't, you're here, so why don't you report while you're here?
I haven't that long, but I think it's appropriate to talk about our student support system. It also highlights some incredible staff that we have. Last year, we kind of talked about data, and in our failure rates are looking just as impressive as they were last year with Minola. It's in large part due to some impressive hard work by our staff. This past Saturday, we had twelve kids show up, and we're getting the combination of those that have to be there, and then we call them out and remind them that they have to be there. We're giving some students who are invited to be there by staff, and we invite them as well. But what we're starting to get is kids showing up, which is need the support, and I think that is great. And when we envisioned this last year, we talked about support, but those are just words on paper. I turn around, I used to be in at the doorway, and next thing I know, I have four teachers in here, and I only have one on staff. There's three who show up, because, you know, Mr. Brummer, he likes the donuts. So he-
It's the donuts that gets us on that.
And he stays the whole time, works with kids before practice. Mr. Bueller comes in, Mrs. Luca was down there prior to doing some stuff for the yearbook. And we also had, you know, other teachers that were actually on duty. So I, I was just tickled thinking, with their effort and dedication to show up and help the kids, it's going wonderful. And when you say student support, it's, it's words on paper, but you see the actions of the teachers who are responsible for supporting kids, it's great.
Thanks.
All right, so good news with supply chain issues. The Chromebooks are coming. The batch that we had placed in order back in the spring are finally on their way here. That date is actually next week, Thursday, I estimate, that we'll have them. So we've been waiting for them, because that will help out our, some of our high school grades, and there's one grade in the middle school that do not have the new Chromebooks. And they're seeing their siblings and other students having them. So they want to know when it's there, trying to get them. So if it wasn't for supply chain issues, we would all have them at this point. But I would say with this next batch coming in, we can consider ourselves out of the deficit of, you know, waiting for stuff to, to come in in our regular cycle. Less excited to it, same idea as the five, the ship of copiers that we ordered in Jan, in, I think, August. They finally are arriving, they'll be here next week as well. So we are slowly getting back on pace with our three to five-year replacement behind for things. So that's my good news to share.
Robert, those copiers, volume copy, like, are they?
Yes, the ones like in district office, in the library, the teacher copiers.
So we purchase them out, right? We don't lease them through both?
We lease them through both, because on a, on a four, three, four, or five-year basis. And they're on a service contract. So we give the state data, like, to it, not only for the hardware, but for copies as well. And-
Thank you. I see your socks back there, Wendy. So I'm guessing you're back there attached to those socks.
Is that just the socks?
Now I've seen the whole picture, thank you.
So thank you to student council for all of these wonderful days that we need to dress up as. So I don't have much to add. The OATA has been meeting for the past couple of months, gearing up with our negotiation team, because we are going to start negotiating our new contract. We're set to meet with the district, January, then, and stuff like that. So that's where our big push is right now, setting down, trying to figure out what our proposals are going to be and all of that. That's where we are.
Heather, are you willing to report tonight to us?
Yes, I am. Deb wrote something down, so I can share it. We have been meeting with all of our departments over the past couple of weeks, I would say several weeks, to see how the year's been going. And we learned a great deal from each department. So it's an ongoing. We're doing well.
Doing great. And you're getting ready for negotiations as well?
Yes, we are. Yes, that will be coming soon.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here today. Thank you, Wendy. Agent is hopefully doing well right now himself. And on the new business, it may be a resolve that eight point two through eight point thirteen be approved by a consent agenda, and a motion is moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Communications. And communications in North Carolina. And discussion roundtable, we, Christine, was listening to kind of talk a little bit about deputy treasurer position, and put together a lot of information for us. Must be a good time to have a conversation about what is this new position entail, and why is it important to you?
Well-
For our district, I should say, I should say to you, Christine.
Well, for, you know, one of the things for our district, and we've found over the years is, you know, district office and the business office staff is, is, wears a lot of hats, especially in smaller districts. You know, we, we kind of, we take care of not just the expense side of things, we take care of, you know, revenue side of things, and, and making sure that we've met all of our requirements as far as reporting, so that we make sure that everything, all that we have coming to us is coming to us. And that's been a burgeoning responsibility over the years. I know I gave you, and I didn't bring with me, well, I do have to hear Barry, a list of all of the things that have been added to the business administrator responsibilities over the years. I envision the district treasurer, you know, especially with my history and where, and the district I was in before, and what I did as treasurer, I vision, envisioned the treasurer role differently than we have it structured here. When I did an analysis across our Genesee Valley, Voces region, and excluding our outliers, like, I didn't compare us to Batavia, I didn't compare us to Wyoming, but of the, of the districts, there's, their business office staff outside of their, their business administrator averages three point one eight positions. We have two, and I'm here, and I know you see it, I don't need to reiterate it too much, I'm here with exponential hours. So my proposal is to develop the, the treasurer position more into what my role was, my part in my previous district as treasurer, one that's more of kind of like taking on some of the responsibilities as, that the business administrator, that I'm doing here. So things like, you know, the initial first pass at the SD three and submitting that kind of stuff, taking one hundred percent ownership on, on the, the bank reconciliations. Can't do that here, because we don't have the staff to have the checks and balances and the separation of duties. That makes it very difficult with a small staff that we have. Another issue that I have is that we don't have cross-training. We don't have backup to, you know, if someone's out, if Stacy's out, I don't have anybody to do payroll, so guess who does it? And, and that's, you know, it's just, we don't have that. So not, what I'm envisioning is if we have the proper training, or we have the proper staffing, we can have the proper cross-training, so we're not missing something when someone's out. We can have a backup, we can have that separation of duties, and making sure that we're checking the box on things. We had an issue, you know, being a little late on some stuff recording for audit. There was just a lot of deadlines due in June. The, the stuff for the, the state grants took a lot of time, but it was important. I mean, it was one point three million dollars that was brought into the district last year. You saw tonight the benefits of those things and bringing them in here. That program, this presentation tonight, which just touched my heart, and I literally had tears in my eyes, because I know that we brought that into this district, that, that happened because of those grants. You know, and it's, it's, it's huge, it's important. But if you don't, if you can't spend that time searching those things out and bringing those things in, you know, those things are, don't, our kids don't benefit from it. Same thing from capital and facility side of things. We have to look for ways to, to make sure that we're able to fund these capital projects and doing the capital outlay projects. You know, it takes time to apply for these things, it takes time to get them implemented. If you don't, if you don't have the time to do it, and you don't apply for it, then you miss out on those opportunities. I don't want to miss out on opportunities. I see something, I'm like a kid in a candy shop, let's go get it. And, you know, unfortunately, it keeps me here till obscene hours. So my, my vision is, it really fixes a lot of the issues that I've examined over the last two years in the district, will bring us some, you know, major benefits in our office, and checking some boxes on cross-training, separation of duties, making sure that we're, we're completing all of our state mandated requirements, which you saw that list, the things that have just been added. Last year, we went to, and I know I didn't say it all, and I apologize, we went from, on the surveys at the state, we went from, in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the ESA funded surveys on the state were two. In twenty, it's gone up, it went up three that next year, it went up one the year after that, two after that, and now it's up to eleven. We are up to eleven surveys that have to be completed for that. You know, we, we've added, we went from six grants to sixteen grants this last year. We had, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the state added the ESA financial transparency report, reporting, which is by building after the fact. So not only in the fall do we have to report to the state our SD three, which is what generates our state aid, there's also now another mandated report that has to be done by December, which, you know, you, you think you're done with your audit, and you think you've submitted everything to the state, and then, but wait, there's more financial reporting. We have to report that, that's all of the prior years, by building, by program area, what we spent. That was added in eighteen nineteen, that's a huge project. Also, in eighteen nineteen, New York State decided that they wanted to look at it too, but from a budget perspective. So in September first, not only are we working all the summer for audit and getting ready to finalize our prior year and roll into our new year, we now also have another, and the SD three- SD three is also due around that time. We now also have this thing called the New York State Financial Transparency Report, which is reporting on the budget for the next year. So, you know, it's just more that's been added. The Medicaid cost report, that's gotten extensive. The maintenance effort calculators, that, that was new as well. That's twice a year we have to report on that to make sure that we're spending the proper money in our special ed budget to, you, you can't reduce effort from the prior year or you lose your 611, 619 funding. So there's all these things that I don't want to lose out on for us. I don't want to make a mistake, I don't want to miss something. So, you know, my, my thoughts are that it will bring some balance to our office, it'll bring some balance to my life, but it'll, it'll make sure that we're still getting everything that we need for the district.
Are there additional grant opportunities? I know you feel like you're turning over a lot of stones here and working hard to get everything that you've got, but is there things that you see other districts get? Even pre-COVID, like I know a lot of this came out with COVID as a result of, but even pre-COVID, were there things, are there things? Can, can you see this, not just doing some of the stuff that we're already doing and easing things, but is there other areas that we can explore?
Well, absolutely. So for example, one of the things we want to do, and Lynn keeps asking me about it and I just don't have the time to spend on it, is we need, you know, one of the things that fell out of the capital project because of COVID and the funding and the expenses and how things worked out, we didn't replace the playground at the elementary school. We would like to do that, but it's a project trying to figure out, okay, to what extent do we want to do it? Where can we get funding? Do we solicit donations? Do we solicit, you know, what's out there available to do this? Yes, there are things out there available, but it's just finding them. You, I think the conversation that come up with Bosse's talking about, and I think we talked with Kevin, is potentially, you know, is their grant writer capabilities, you know, are we looking into maybe employing that through Bosse's? You know, because if this is a grant that's available to me, it's available to all of them. So why should I be just the only one to benefit from it? Let's look at it from a global perspective, from our Bosse's. What can we do to better our Bosse's and, and all the districts within them? So, so there's that conversation as well. And so there's projects and things that I'd like to get to. For example, you know, revising our purchasing policies and procedures and making sure people are complying with things. Coming up with some annual trainings for our faculty advisors to make sure that they know the requirements for their, you know, as a faculty advisor, what they can and what they can't do. Can you use the tax exempt certificate? No, you can't because it's, even though it's a district, it's a district thing, it's, it's not, it's a student centered thing. So you, just those kinds of things, implementing some trainings and stuff like that. But yeah, there's, there's grant opportunities out there for us.
And the funding for the position, did you say, is there COVID funding or is that expired at the end of this year? What's the type of?
So, so the, to get us, to get us so that we're built into the, get it built into the budget. To me, the first year, like right now, the immediate need, we've got, so in the ARPA monies, there's all those little buckets. One of the buckets that we have the greatest flexibility in was where we were going to use the air handler, used to get the air handler here. But the, the cost of it was significantly higher than what we initially, we had left in the, in there. So we had put in, we had 90,000 in there. It's not going to, it's not going to cover that work. So the thoughts are, the next capital outlay we're planning for, there's a little bit of money left in the capital project that's really geared more towards that type of thing. At least we'll get building aid on a truly a building project and use that 90 towards something that we don't have another alternate aid source for. So if that frees that up, we could probably fund this position for the first half year this year and then next year, and then that funds out. But at least it gives us an opportunity, it gives us a couple of budget cycles to maybe get this built into the budget. So the initial funding is there. And we also have a, you know, we've got some other pilot money that's coming on. We've got the ECA money that's, so we got the first year of the plug power pilot, but next year, we, we also bring on the ECA with that, which is another $300,000. We also have.
What ECA?
So the ECA is the education contribution agreement.
Oh, that came with the plug power.
That came with plug power. And that's for the districts to use in whatever way. And it's outside the tax cap calculation. And that's what a lot of the districts are going with now. We're trying to, because other municipalities don't have that pressure on their, their, their tax levies like we do. There are other pilots that are coming to fruition. I can't talk about them publicly because they aren't. But if anyone wants to talk about them privately, you know, we can share that as part of, and you'll know about them, some of them as part of budget.
Well, they reported the number for the Cider, right? It's like 600,000, right? That they're saying for the school district here?
Right, so it's, yeah, there's, there's Cider Pecate, which is, the pilot is 120, the ECA is 314 a year. Is, is, that's the conversation. But there's also Orleans Solar, that's new.
What is Silver like Cider? What with the timeline? Is that, we're looking at like another couple of years before?
I think, I think that's, yes, that's, that's what I'm hearing, 2020, late 2024.
I think so. Twenty, yeah. So I think it would be the 24, 25.
23, they're saying like 18 months. So is it, when that comes online and then that becomes a survey? Yeah. Then of course, there's the Edwards vacuuming, they've got to be getting in and negotiating that. It's got to be a big chunk.
That's, that's going to be huge.
There's a lot of employees, wasn't it like six, seven, four?
Right. Right. So we have a.
I hope you haven't drive by that.
Yeah.
But there's still a ton of space up there. It's going to change a community. I don't know that it's all good. It's going to bring a lot of money into this community.
It's going to change.
It's going to change traffic over in half the posts that live over there.
All about it now.
Do business over there.
Caryville's going to have to expand.
So this is a position that seems like is going to be paid for this position, but this position is then hopefully going to pay for itself through grants and some efficiency.
That's what I'm hoping. I, I really, I see that. Like I just would like to spend more time, you know, what we're doing with, there's a ton of reporting though too that's coming up with the education stabilization funding. My, my concern with that is if we don't dot our i's and cross our t's with that, you know, making sure that, that they don't come back and say, you didn't track something right or you didn't report something right. So, you know, it's a collaborative effort, it's a team effort, you know, with Lynn and Connie in the room with me, I feel better about, you know, some of that. But, and we actually signed up for the latest, the latest reporting period for that so that we can kind of see the errors and.
Faults in for.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, yeah. Let them, let them, you know, be the guinea pigs in going through the process and then we'll, we'll learn from their mistakes, hopefully.
You'll ask some attrition too from Lee's retirement?
Pardon?
You'll ask some attrition too from Lee's retirement to help support that?
Yes, yes. Salaries, salary change from Lee's, so that'll, that'll relieve the budget. And I do have to say that we do, the one coming on is not taking on health insurance of it was kind of like a little relief for me as well. So, so there's, you know, I feel confident we'll be able to make it work.
So for the common budget here, it's December already, right? Do we, do we have our wish lists? Do we just?
So we're working on that. We just had a meeting today. So we have the new software. So we, we actually walked through the new software to, to, to show how to, how to create that. I've actually rolled the budget. It's sitting there as is right now. They're going to go back and, and work on that over the next few weeks. We have our meetings, the administrators meeting with me on the 10th and the 11th of January. We're meeting the 12th before he, he goes on vacation. And then, you know, we'll have our first presentation and it'll be a wish list. You know, always that first one is, is the tough one. We don't know what are we going to raise. You know, I do have a preliminary look see for our foundation aid, which is only 9 million of our 14 million dollars budget, but that is going up, but it's, it's, you know, it's going up.
What about personnel requests? I think that's probably my question here. Is there any additional anticipated personnel requests for the district?
Not, not moving forward. You know, like you said.
My building's pretty full.
There's no space.
My building's pretty full.
Yeah, usually, you know, and like I said, usually at the end of every year, knowing any sort of retirements or, or whatever, we take a look to see if we can, you know, be more efficient, more effective. And I do not think that, that we have anybody that we wouldn't fill. But I'm also not anticipating additional staffing.
We ramped up in the, you know, the, the trans, or the buildings and grounds department. I think they're pretty well staffed with the two maintenance. So we were able to do that. We're, we're still working out the, the guidance secretary position. And that's one of the areas too, I think, you know, we, we are light on that. I mean, in, in other districts, you have two full-time secretaries, 12 months a year in your, in each building. They back each other up. There's no, you know, I can't do this job because I'd be working out of class with civil service and this and that. So, you know, I do think we're light on the, the support staff. I think that kind of trickles, maybe partially trickles down to district office and makes things. I know a lot of people rely on Lee, come to her with a lot of questions, same for Stacy. So I think once we get that settled, I think in, in the guidance department, I think that'll be good, that'll help Jordan, that'll help, you know, they're supposed to support Jordan, Rob, and the athletic director as well. So I think that'll help us up in district office, but I still think that there's a need.
We have a timeline for that in all of you.
Yesterday, six months ago?
It seems like if that keeps going out, are we still waiting?
Oh, for the, for that? Oh, you're talking the guidance secretary? So I under, I hear the results are in. They've, the, the people who took the exam have received their scores. However, we can't do anything until we get the list. And Genesee County Civil Service has to go through the list and get the provisionals addressed. So some people that took the test, took the test because they were in a position provisionally. And they're not going to leave their current employer, but they have to go through the process of vetting them off the list. So once we get a clean list, they'll send it to us. And until we have that, I can't, I can't do anything. Our hands are tied.
Do you know when you're expecting them?
Days, that a week two? And that was the end of last week? So. They have to hear back, they have to give them a certain number of days. Like they send a letter out, snail mail, and they have to wait to get the response back. And they give them a certain number of days and they cut them off, I think, but. But they know, they know that we've been waiting. So.
Okay, so moving forward, that heat treasure position, we can continue to have some more conversation about this and send, Christine, send emails of questions and then that can kind of determine where we move, in what direction we go on with this. Christine, thanks so much for all of that.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you guys for considering it, you know. You know, it's, it's something I feel strongly about for our department.
Well, thank you for all that work. How many sent to us? Let's see, if there's anything else we're on, favor? Personnel, sorry. Be resolved that 11.2 through 11.11 be approved by a consent agenda? Make a motion? Make a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Wendy.
On 11.4, the tutoring and substitute coverage, Matt, I guess this may be a question for you. Is that the OATA sub-coverage idea for substitute coverage?
Carla, is this where we have everyone approve, just in case we run into a pinch where we need to ask someone?
Right, and we have the MOA signed.
The MOA I thought was for the tutoring.
That's the 40 an hour for tutoring.
Okay, and this is why I'm asking, because the sub-coverage, does it say $20 per hour? Because our contract says $20 per 40 minutes.
It's $20 for 40 minutes. Is that what that rate of pay for substitute teaching is? There's.
So that's why I just want to make sure before it gets board approved, what, what we're talking about through.
So it says here, Wendy, that its rate of pay of substitute teachers is 20 an hour. What's the, what is, I, off the top of my head, I, I don't know what the contract was.
So the OATA contract says.
Part of the contract, does it matter?
No, I'm.
Do you, can you just?
The $40 an hour a tutoring, that's fine. The rate of pay of substitute teachers, what is that in there for? I guess my question is, like what, what is that? Who?
Because you're making all the teachers, they can be substitute teachers, correct?
So, so if that, if that's what that is, then it's $20 per 40 minute set, for, per class, per 40 minute session?
Okay.
As per contract?
Yes, per contract. We can, we can change that right here if the board.
Yeah, that, no, I'd rather have it be, yeah, no, that's a good.
Do you want me to write it in?
That's a good catch.
Good catch. So, yeah, that'd be $20 per 40 minutes. Per 40 minute class.
You would be subbing for an hour and then you would want a fraction of that.
No, it's, it's $20 per class, per 40 minutes, correct?
Sure. So let's go.
Thanks for catching that, Wendy.
All right, so based on that correction, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion. Do I get a motion to approve that?
So I'll amend my motion.
Thank you.
To approve 11.2 through 11.11 and alter 11.4 for rate of pay of substitute teachers be, to be $20 per period?
Yes, thank, thank you, Matt. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Matt, for making that amendment. And that gives us two. Item 11.12, appointment of district treasurer. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves Jenna Alford to probationary position of the district treasurer effective January 23rd, 2023 through July 23rd, 2023. July 23's. Can I get a motion? Make a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jenna, and welcome to Oakfield, wherever you are.
Yep, she hit, it was kind of last minute and she had previous, previous commitments, so.
More than okay.
Yep.
More than okay, as long as she's here on the 23rd, we're happy.
I apologize to the board for, you know, putting that on the agenda, you know, last minute, just with the, with the time constraints and just the way things panned out. So I appreciate the board.
Yep, no problem, no problem. Happy to have her. All right, tenure appointment. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Matthew Peterson, be granted tenure effective January 14th, 2023. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. All right. Let's see here. Item 12, under the executive session, be it resolved that the board enter the executive session, discuss this contract. 729, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. 729, if they read it right, or I read it right.
Better, better does.